Jacob. Rochelle. Shannon.
Here.
Watson. Here. Weathers.
Here.
Six present. Two, uh, what? Seven present. I apologize. Seven present to Austin.
We do have a call, so we will proceed. As mentioned in the opening remarks, we're going to forego the student recognitions and the school recognition, so we'll go down to public comments. I wasn't handed anything from the public comment standpoint, so we'll move forward to line item number one, consent items. The adoption of the agenda. Everything was published, I believe, on the agenda, right? We have no amendments to the agenda. So I will look for a motion. I would entertain a motion for approval of line one consent items.
I make a motion, please.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Weathers. I'll have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Adams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, consent items carry. Item number two, report items. School reports, we're going to forego for this month. We'll pick them up, I guess, next month.
Yes, sir.
Just kind of push those back down the calendar. Personnel report. This should have been in the audit packet. Any questions to the director on personnel report? No questions there. We'll move forward with line C, projects updates. Summertown High School football field. Mr. Atkins, I had asked him to have the contractor present. I see the Doss Brothers is here, so Mr. Atkins, Tucker, I'll handle it. You guys.
Mr. Chairman, per your request, Howler Doss and the Doss Brothers are here to give us an update, timeline, where we are on that project. Tyler, if you'll come forward.
Thank you all for having me this evening. I've got some papers here that I'll share with you guys if you're interested, but we keep up with, to start with that, we keep up with the rainfall on every job we do. We signed the contract on January thirteenth with you guys and ladies, and thirty days is what we have to do some middle, so getting everything approved through the architects and all that, so that gave us a start date of January fifteenth. And since January fifteenth, we've had about seven inches of rain, six point eight inches of rain, so I'm gonna make this short and just say it's been almost impossible to do, hardly anything, but we are still on very good track. Underground utilities, electric, water, all that stuff has already been installed. Should be done with underground plumbing and electric next week. Puddings have already been dug. Now, Mr. Tucker said he saw them, they're digging puddings, and we will have block lane starting on first week of March. So I'm sure the question all of you are wanting to know is, is it going to be done by football season? And we're gonna do everything in our power to have it done by football season. I don't see any who goes, so thank you. I think everything will be good.
So this contract, I'm sorry, board members, questions out in the back? The contract that you're referring to, that is just in regards to the built house or?
Yes, phase.
And, Mr. Tucker? Phase two. So phase one, that was you guys as well, correct?
Phase one, we have built ninety-nine percent on everything as of today, actually. What we've decided is pretty much, you can't finish some of the phase one items until phase two are done, because like paving the road, putting the final topping on, I'll put the final topping on, dozers, all that stuff, all the equipment, concrete trucks are gonna tear it up. So I don't think we have anything in writing together. I think it's, we know Doss Brothers, you know them, we're gonna take care of it.
Right.
We're building what we can build except for the paving, and we're just gonna.
Wait till the end.
Wait till the end to do it. Yeah.
So phase, go ahead.
We left off a little sidewalk, phase one, some fencing, just some things that was gonna get in the way of phase two.
Okay.
But it's gonna be.
Sod is complete?
No.
Sod, phase one.
That's another thing we decided to do, so we were, obviously, you all know, we decided to have the well because of the water problems in Summertown. The well's installed, we're waiting on the pump, but the reason we've held off on sod is because right now, they were saying no water from Summertown. Until the well's done, you ain't getting water, and we don't want the sod to die, so we're waiting till spring, we'll install the sod, then we'll have the well up, and if the city of Summertown says no water, we got a well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
So probably, depending on when the bleachers get delivered and all that stuff from outside vendors through the school system, it's probably into March, April, we're putting sod down, which is the perfect time, so.
Awesome.
Talk to your brother to come down.
We'll, yeah, I'll make sure that gets.
It gets.
So we'll, any other questions from the board on this project?
It's my understanding that sod comes with a guarantee, is that right? Something about the guarantee for its, is it not?
What does that mean?
The sod coming with a guarantee?
Mm-hmm.
From who?
Who was putting it down? It's not?
Have you heard anything about that?
That it will live?
Mm-hmm.
No, there's no guarantee.
What sod, very quick, guys?
Tiptuff, Bermuda. Supposed to be the newest, best, I don't know, but no, there's no guarantee, all, you know.
I'd be surprised, I've never seen a landscaper or anybody get sharing tea on plants or grass. Where did you get that?
I don't know, maybe just stop talks to me.
Okay.
I will say that the sod supplier talks very highly of it, and if you get to research the tiptuff, I don't know much about grass, but it's supposed to be the real good stuff. Most sod, you can't even install it in the winter. Tiptuff, the supplier said, yeah, you can install this, it don't fall apart, all this, and so I think you're talking about some really good stuff. But obviously, if there's no water on it, and it dies.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that water is gonna.
Well, appreciate you being here, Mr. Doss. This is something new that we have asked the director of schools. I know that you've worked well, Doss has always worked well with us, and your report to Mr. Tucker, but for the sake of all nine of us board members and our constituents, we would like to have you here every month to give a report on the progress and make sure that the timelines are being met, and let us know so there is no surprises. We have to answer to our constituents, so I need you to answer to us.
Sure.
So we'll have you here every month for it. So thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
If you want, leave that, and we'll get that handed out.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. Good job.
Appreciate it. Next project to talk about, the Summertown High School circle renovation. I don't think any of the board members, Director Atkins.
I believe Mr. Tucker's gonna give us an update on that.
So that you kind of get an idea. We've got a timeline. Mr. Tucker, is that something you want me to send to the board when I get back in the office, or? Okay. You cover it now?
Yes.
Okay.
He got this, Tucker. Nobody.
I'm fine. I know I probably just.
While Mr. Tucker's getting ready, I will send to the board the timeline and some notes that Mr. Tucker put together today, so you'll have that on a couple of projects as well. I'll get that to you when I get back in the office after the meeting.
Okay. For the hallway and the circle renovation at the high school at Summertown, Brad Slater Construction was awarded that bid, and just to fill you in on exactly what all that involves, for the hallways in the old portion of Summertown High School, which is, right now, we're the middle school, part of the middle school's in that part of the building, but it's gonna go back to all the high schools, gonna be there. That's what we're talking about, the hallways in that building and the circle portion. The hallway work will be new drop ceiling, new LED lights, it will all be painted, new baseboard, and then in the circle, ten classrooms on that circle portion of the building, there will be new drop ceiling, new LED lights painted, new flooring and baseboard there as well. The hallway in the circle will be dropped lower, and I don't know if you're familiar with that hallway in the circle, but it's up high, and it will be dropped to the regular hallway, high throughout the building, it will match with the rest of the hallways. So Slater Construction was awarded that bid. They're gonna start hallway work, spring break, to get a little jump start, a head start, and they're gonna get as much done as they can during spring break. It does involve all of the hallway in that building, so they're gonna actually start in the gym lobby, in the theater lobby hallway, and they're gonna do that work first and come back up the hallway as far as they can get during spring break, so that they can't do that work during school, but that week, they're gonna get as much done to get a jump start. Then, they can't get back in until after school's out, so that's gonna be in May. And when they were awarded this contract, it was on this timeframe from the end of school to the start of school that they had to be finished, so they actually have some dates, some deadlines to be finished. We have some work involved with that, so we're working with Mr. Porter and Dr. Hallmark. The last two weeks of school, really the last week of school, may look a little different on that circle. We'll have to do some rearranging with students, with teachers, because the plan is, on the week of May the twelfth, that's the second week before school's out, any storage containers that we need will be delivered to the site. Our technology department's gonna be working to remove some smart boards and things from classrooms and store those. Then the last week of school, the week of May the nineteenth, which is the last full week of school, we will start some demo work in a science room. We're gonna do that work, 'cause when we turn it over to Brad Slater Construction, they're going in, they're gonna have basically a blank slate. The rooms are gonna be emptied out, and so we've gotta get them emptied out. So we've gotta remove the furniture, we're gonna remove some old science tables in that room, and then we're gonna move the middle school teachers who are in the circle, we're gonna move them over to the high school, which is the old, where they were before. The high school teachers will have to store their, anything they're taking with them to their rooms, they're gonna have to be stored until those new circle rooms are finished. So middle school will be able to, once the high school stuff is stored, those teachers, wherever we have to store that, their whatever personal items, furniture that's gonna go with them, those rooms will be able to be occupied by the middle school, they'll just move straight in, and we'll do that the last week of school. So middle school will be ready to go, there won't be any delay for them, they'll be set up and ready. The high school teachers moving back to the circle will have to wait until the very end of the summer to get back into those rooms. So Slater has the couple of months there to do his work, to finish the hallways, to finish those ten rooms. The very last week of July, we have some mill work or some cabinetry work that will be done in those classrooms. So Slater has, he has to be done, we've given them a date of, I believe, it's July, it's the last week, it's the Wednesday of, the last Wednesday in July is his date he has to be done, and so after that last Wednesday, then Varia is a company that we are gonna contract with, with a state contract for mill work, for cabinetry work, and they're gonna put some cabinets in those ten classrooms. They need about three days to do that work, so they gotta get in there on that Wednesday. Hopefully, they'll get in a little bit earlier. If he finishes one room, they'll, they can come a little earlier, but they've gotta get all that done by the August the fourth, which is the first day of school. So it's gonna be a tight timeline, obviously, to get this done. We, if we have any delays, it would be with the cabinets going in at the end, which would be fine, we could do one room at a time, even if school's in session, we could, you know, dislo, you know, one classroom could move somewhere else while we put it, and it's basic cabinetry, it's not gonna take long to put it in, but that's the only delay I see at the end, if we have any delay, would be, we may have a little carryover with some cabinetry work that goes into those classrooms. But Brad Slater, they feel confident that they will be able to perform it and get it done during the summer. We used them a few, I think a couple summers ago, when we did some work at New Prospect Middle Wing during the summer, and they were able to renovate that, those classrooms and that hallway during the summer and get us back in when school started, so I feel like they know what to do, and they know the time crunch that we're under, and they wouldn't have accepted the bid and the timeframe unless they feel confident they can get it done.
Mr. Tucker, on the list here, Mr. Atkins shared with me, the new emergency exit combo lights.
Yes.
So is this just, okay, it's just brought to my attention of a single door that needs to be changed into a double door. Are we gonna accommodate that?
We are, we're looking at that. We, we've, you know, we've, in agreement with Evers, with our doors, Evers Construction, and Evers has looked at that, and they're providing us with a price for that. We have not received that price yet, but they are working on that for us. I anticipate it will be a large number, just because of the work.
It entails?
That it entails. There's some awning there outside that will have to be moved and redone, some sidewalk work outside, plus cutting that frame, or cutting that for a double, it'd be, it will be like replacing an existing door there, it'll be a little bit more expensive, but I haven't got the number yet.
Mr. Chairman, you have the door going out from towards the cafeteria or outside?
Going towards the cafeteria.
Yes.
It's a, it's a single door, it's a traffic nightmare.
Okay.
And Mr. Atkins and Mr. Porter, I, you know, of course, the board will, as a whole, can make their decision, but I will bring to the floor that that gets done. So whatever that, find out that cost, that needs to get done.
At a minimum, it needs to be some glass in that door, because right now, it's a solid door, you can't see coming and going, so.
We got a lot of, a lot of traffic going in and out, so that's a big bottleneck issue. But anyway, thank you very much. Any other questions to Mr. Tucker on the Summertown High School renovation? All right, next project, E.O. Kaufman restroom renovation.
Mr. Chairman, before you, is the, for discussion, the E.O. Kaufman restroom renovation, we have been dealing with this for some time now, and we've shared with the board in a previous meeting, it may have been before the new members came aboard, I can't remember, but restrooms at E.O. Kaufman, that building, the age of that building, the two-story structure, restrooms downstairs, restrooms upstairs, we noticed last May, an issue that we felt like we needed to address. We weren't sure what was going to happen with those restrooms, the age of that building, the structure of that building, and so we closed those restrooms early in the fall semester 2024. Now Kaufman has been able to make do with the new restrooms that we have in that building, the additions that we've added, they have more restrooms now than they've had ever before, but that is an ongoing issue for us, and we had a engineering firm do an assessment. We came back with a number that we shared with the board, that we, and the board felt was a little higher than it needed to be. We paused that, we've done some inquiries of our own, asking some local companies, and what we are, where we are now with this project is, before we can proceed with the local companies to do this work, they need the plans for that, and we're prepared to offer to the board consideration of those plans. We have probably twenty-five thousand dollars in labor costs, the assessment of what needed to be done to that, to those restrooms, before anybody would take it on, they needed to know what they were taking on, and it's quite an involved project, we know that. It's a, it's a massive project, when you look at the age of the building, the structure, cast iron pipes, it's work, and so the plans and the labor that is already, if we buy the plans, we're about eighty-two thousand dollars to get the plans and then take this to the next level and bid it out from the district to locals to complete that work. That would involve a little bit of work from our maintenance, but we would, the vast majority of that work will be done by local contractors. So the consideration for you is entertain the idea of the ESG plans, they're the structural engineers, the architectural folks that put this together for us, they've given us the price for the plans, we believe those price, that price for the plans also includes prior work for the labor that went into the assessment to tell us what is needed in that building. So that's where we are with that. Mr. Tucker, did I leave anything out on where we are? So you're being asked to consider purchasing the architectural design, the structural engineered plans for renovating four restrooms at E.O. Kaufman that are two-story restrooms that probably are seventy-five years old, that's gonna take some, it's gonna be an involved project, and so I think that's one of the reasons the price is high. We did learn today, the architectural plans, designs were over two hundred pages, so it's been studied, and I think that's where I'm at with it, just to ask the board for consideration or debate, or tell us what we need to do with it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So I'll open up, I mean, I have my own set of questions and comments to make on this, but I'll open the floor up to others before.
The ESG, is that the only type of ESG that's drawn the plans for submitted?
Yes.
So the plans are complete, is that what I'm hearing, or is this?
Yes.
Bid to draw the.
Our, my understanding is the plans are complete, and they are holding the plans until we make a payment for those plans.
The contractor doing the work, do they have the ability to draw their own plans?
They have not expressed that to me in my discussions with them.
So, Mr. Chairman, just the upstairs restroom?
All four.
Upstairs, not downstairs?
All upstairs, two upstairs, two downstairs, and they're stacked on each other.
That's what I wanted, yeah.
And Mrs. Watson, we had asked about just repairing the ones that were damaged, but because of the structure of that facility and how they're all connected, you have to do all four. Is that, that is correct?
Plumbing.
Plumbing.
And what timeline are you thinking, like, this is the summer?
That's.
Or they can start now?
It would be very similar to what Mr. Tucker just explained at Summertown in the circle. We would want to get them in there that last week of school and work seven days a week if they will do that night and day, 'cause it's involved. There's some structural challenges that have to be addressed.
Yeah, and I went over there, and Mr. Long showed me, there's like some corrosion that's pretty weathered from years of just use, and then structurally, right beside it, there's a lot of electrical that's against that wall, that they're gonna have to completely, you know, remove and move, so if you have a second, and, you know, I'd encourage you to go by and try to look, and he'll take you down and show you the situation that they're in right now, but it is upstairs and downstairs, so on top of each other.
I'll share my thoughts, and I've had several conversations just today around this, 'cause I dishonestly, I saw this price of these plans, and being in the line of work that I'm in and what I see and deal with daily, I was pretty shocked. So I called some contacts of mine who are civil engineers who do these things, and professionally, even for our own city, and talked to these gentlemen, and the feedback I'm getting is this is double what it ought to be. My recommendation to fellow board members and everybody, we can make our decision, but my recommendation is to push this off and have Mr. Atkins have ESG present next month, and let's ask them exactly why this is eighty-two thousand dollars and two hundred pages. But that's, that's my recommendation. Sir?
Please, the twenty-five grand, have we been billed that twenty-five yet?
We have, have not, no.
So regardless, we bought the plans and now we owe the twenty-five grand?
Correct.
Yeah, so along those, along those lines, if we got twenty-five grand into this project just for them to come and do the assessment and all that work, and then, so basically, that puts those plans at the price that they ought to be, but I'm still gonna make that recommendation, I'd like to have them in front of me, or in front of us, and ask them, why is it, why are we looking at eighty-two thousand? What are we getting for this eighty-two thousand? What exactly are we getting, and where do we go? Now, that does delay the project, but talking with, I did, like Mr. Shannon suggested, I have been on site and talked to Principal Long, and we're, we're making it at Kaufman without these restrooms, so it's not a dire emergency that these get done. Another month delay is not gonna wreck the ship, but that's just my personal opinion, and again, so, I mean, I'll make the motion on the floor that we push this off another month and get ESG present for this meeting, for this board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is the twenty-five part of the eighty-two? Or should I?
Yes.
Fifty-seven is higher than what you, people told you.
It still should be thirty to forty, but I think the twenty-five in it brings it closer too, but, so I think, I just learned that tonight, when we got here, as I was talking today, I thought the eighty-two thousand was just the plans, but now I know the eighty-two thousand is the plans and the twenty-five thousand that we owe for the assessment and all that, but I would still personally, again, and I'm throwing the motion on the table, pushing this till March and having ESG present to answer some questions that I have and maybe others ask, so I'll make the motion that we put this off till March. Is there any second?
Do you need a second?
Yes, I need a second. All in favor of pushing this off till March, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Tucker, please reach out to ESG, see if they will be present at our March meeting to answer some questions on this plans and this project.
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
Any other conversations around those projects before we move on to the director's update?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we move down to D, I wanted to ask about Ingram Sal, we put that, Cory actually spoke about that last meeting to ask for it to go to the front. Do we have any updates on Ingram Sal's bathroom?
So Mrs. Marx presented, and she mentioned, she presented a school report, she mentioned the restrooms, it just so happens, those restrooms were next in line anyway. It just so happens those restrooms were next in line anyway. And so it started what, a day or two after that, and they have been gutted and refurbished. Now what we do from the district, there's still two sets of restrooms over there that need to be refurbished. We do one at a school and we move to the next school, and that way everyone is getting refurbished restrooms. So she still has two to go. I've inspected those and they're, they're much, much nicer, and the ones that we've done throughout the district are very nice, long overdue, but.
A consideration on that is, I happened to be there, the kids were running in and out of the bathroom, you could see where they was washing their hands, they're almost up this high, too, if we can consider, I don't know, did they lower them any, because she was talking about possibly getting them lowered?
I think they're set to be a certain height, aren't they? Because you're thinking maybe some?
And I'm not sure what the plumbing, yeah, the old ones were. I need to go check the new, but the, and I'm not sure what the fall of the plumbing, how, just how low they could go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shannon. Anything else before we move to director's update? Moving on, D, director's update, Mr. Atkins.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The budget season is here, Mrs. Ellis and I have been working on that. I've met with David Morgan and shared some ideas with him. I do want to say this, I think you folks know this, I think the board knows this, about the county commission, they have been very supportive of education in Lawrence County for the last several years, and I don't see that changing. Of course, they, like everyone else, may have challenges with their budget, but the commissioners and Mr. Morgan are supportive of education, and I know that is not the case in every other county. And so we're blessed in Lawrence County and appreciate their support of education. It does make a difference when you're talking about restrooms, you're talking about the Circle renovation, you're talking about things that happen in these schools and parking lots that give it to curb appeal. That doesn't happen without the support of the county commission, so I just want to make sure we recognize that support and how blessed we are in Lawrence County. MGT, our growth study, we've began receiving information from that group, a lot of good information that we need to digest and look into, but they're working on the capacity analysis, telling us about the spacing issues. What we had observed from the central office about Summertown Elementary, they confirmed it in the study. That's our most overcrowded school in the district, and then we have some other schools that have extra space, and so at the end of this study, it is our hope that they'll be able to tell us, here's the capacity in your schools, here's some zoning considerations, so that instead of spending money on a hodgepodge approach of a classroom here and a classroom here, that we might be able to begin directing future enrollment to places that have space and utilizing that space more effectively and efficiently than what we have. There will be a public hearing from MGT, a part of the process, as they come in and they will ask questions of the community, they will give the community an opportunity to participate in some survey work. It's not a public forum, it's not an open mic session. That will take place on March 31st at Lawrence County High School at 6:00 PM. We will begin promoting that, letting the community know that they can come and participate in that work. And again, it's not an open mic, it's, how do you feel about this, how do you feel about that, that sort of thing. Maybe an hour, hour and a half of that, so we'll put that information out, we'll have that on our social media and some other ways of communicating that information. Mr. Tucker and I have been in two safety meetings the last couple of weeks with EMA, Homeland Security, and others, just to continue to focus on security around campuses. A lot of good discussion from that, working with the city police and county police, emergency response teams. We will get some more information out at the appropriate time about things that are happening with security and how the county, the community is coming together to make sure that the response times are quicker and that those men and women who are responding are going into our buildings at a rate that helps save lives rather than waiting outside of a hot zone. They're all committed to going in warm zones immediately and start, worst-case scenario. So I'll share more about that at some point. I sat in on a FEMA presentation where we've, we're going to apply for outdoor weather alert systems to be placed at all of our schools. You may be familiar with that, you may see that on some places where they'll have a shot of a place where it says, here's this camera view this. It does have emergency response systems in that, tornadoes, things like that. FEMA will pay up to 75% of that, the state will pay 12% of the remaining 25, and the district would have 12 and a half percent. We're in the early stages of that to get an idea what that would cost, but I'll bring that back to the board when I know a little bit more. It also included some window tent at a reduced price, and Mr. Tucker and I have looked at that for a couple of years, and it's just, it's expensive. This would give us an opportunity to get it through a FEMA grant at about 12.5% of the cost, which is beneficial to the taxpayer and to us. Our teachers are working hard each and every day, I know they've been hit with weather and illness these last few weeks, and I know a lot of folks who may not be in education don't understand that, but with testing just around the corner, teachers are missed four, five, six days for weather and illness is a lot in the world of education to make up that lost time, to keep these kids focused, to bring them back in. Once we get in a rhythm and we have a weather delay, if you're teaching kindergarten first, second, and third, it's almost starting over. And for the high schools who are on a block schedule, those five days can equate to about two and a half weeks of lost instructional time. The state doesn't move the testing dates when we're out for snow or illness, and so our teachers are really going to be putting their shoulder into it the last few weeks before testing. And of course, testing is not everything, but it is something that our teachers have to be aware of. So I just ask for your thoughts on those men and women as they begin this next seven, eight, nine weeks of getting ready for state mandated testing. They do great work each and every day, we're blessed to have them in Lawrence County, and as I said earlier about the county commission, I'll say this about the teachers and administrators, the EAs, the bus drivers, the cafeteria, we are truly blessed in Lawrence County to have the people that we have working for us. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Atkins, how many weather days do you have left?
So we have two weather days that we have set aside for PLCs and professional development that we can use, and so those could be instructional days. I directed Mrs. Kope to begin a waiver process with the state earlier this week when we anticipated being out for weather, and we've also gone to ask for some sickness days as well. But we have two that we can use.
Left?
That we would just, instead of having a parent teacher conference day with no students, we may bring the students in for a half a day, and then we've got a May 22nd date.
So we've already used all of them in the bank?
That we have set aside for just weather, but we use a few weather days for professional development type days.
So each, each year, what do we start with?
We start usually around eight days, eight weather days.
And we gain that by going to three o'clock, right? I mean, that's, years ago, we was at 2:30, we swapped to three o'clock so we could build in these weather days, is that true?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and that gives us eight days for the school year?
Gives us 13 days, we use five to make up the 180 days, so it leaves us about eight. That's a common practice with districts where you will use those days to make up the 180 days. Five of those are instructional or professional development type days.
And you, we've already dismissed eight times, no, six.
Six.
So you see, we got two days left.
Yes.
That we've got set as PLC days that we can use for.
Yeah, and that's a typical practice that other districts are doing, they'll pull them kind of later in the school year, so if you do have days like this in middle of February, a snow day, or some severe weather in the spring, you've got some days there. But plus the appeal days, if we get three of those back, then we'll be fine.
Yeah, so what is, when will you know about the appeal days?
It usually takes five to seven days. I imagine they will get bombarded with the, with waivers.
The sickness waivers and all that. Because you're right, spring and flood and all of our low water bridges, we're bound to have some more issues.
One thing that will help us is a state of emergency that I think was declared this time. I think there's some, some help and assistance when that happens as well.
Right. Does that answer all your questions, Mr. Williams? Well, from the board, Mr. Director, Mr. Atkins, I'll speak that we certainly do appreciate all the hard work that you and your staff does here at the central office, and then certainly echo your comments to all of our teachers and all of our people in the schools, fighting all the illnesses that they're having to fight, and yeah, that's, they do a great job, and we certainly appreciate everything that our teachers do. Any other last questions before we move on? I did have something that slipped my mind and me back up to Mr. Tucker on the Circle renovation and on that timeline, and I have a specific vested interest in this question. Moving of this furniture, we're not going to put that on our teachers to move their desk and all that. We have support there for them to, whether it's football teams or something.
That's why we're going to start at the last of the schools and get them to be present.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you.
We may have ranked football teams a little early.
It might be the chairman of the board in there moving a desk or two. That'd be all right. Okay, thank you, sorry about backing up on that. Director's evaluation?
Mr. Chairman, just a kind of a informational text here for the new members. Each year, the board is required to do an evaluation of the director of schools. We changed over a few years ago to a Google form, it is the TSBA assessment, and then we put it into a Google form. That will come to you from Mrs. Kaiser. I do not look at that, I don't have any say in it, but she will get that to Chairman Daniel and Vice Chairman Dryden, and then we will sit down and have a discussion. That's sometime about April, I think, is when it has to be completed and the review with me has to take place. So that will be coming your way soon. We just asked you, be honest, tell me what I need to work on, things we need to do better from me personally, and then what I need to do with the team around me and our schools. So as you look at those questions, I don't, I don't know what they are, so I can't say call me and I'll help you, I don't, I don't know what they are, so somebody have to help you.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty easy process, like he says, it comes to us in an email. I would encourage you, like he said, be honest. I'd also encourage you, be specific. The more specific it is, the better that me and Vice Chair Dryden can sit down with him and cover, and we'll share, you know, the overall tally, I think, with, with the whole board and kind of show everybody where we're lining up, and the same thing for the next line items, the board's self-evaluation. So we're going to evaluate him, and then we're all going to evaluate ourselves and how we're performing as a board and what areas we need to do better at, and what areas, you know, we need to work on. So again, just be honest on them, be specific, so we can, we can address and improve in areas we need to improve. And we'll get you that information as soon as we can, and once they're complete, I'll share with you the, the results as soon as I can. Any other questions on director's evaluation or the board's evaluation? Moving right along, SCEA, I don't see any representative here, so we'll move forward. Tennessee Legislative Network, Dr. Shannon.
Oh, yes, sir. So there is an update for this. I've sent an email, I went, I attended the Legislative and Legal Institute this, two weeks ago in Franklin, and there are several prefiled bills that's going to come across for education, various from pre-K all the way to, you know, foods and different things. I did send you all an email of that presentation just now, so y'all have that in your inbox when you leave here. If y'all have any questions about those, I can go as, in detail on most of them, just from what, you know, they taught, so can Mr. Atkins, he was at that course too, so if y'all have any questions, just reach out to me, but they're pretty self-explanatory. In the PowerPoint, it'll have the Senate bill or, you know, House bill, whatever, and then it'll go through and give details of that, but for sake of time, I just wanted to email so y'all could look at that.
Thank you for that. We'll, I'll review that and reach out to Dr. Shannon or Mr. Atkins for any questions. Anything else, Dr. Shannon?
No, sir, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I have a question, I just sit here listening and talking about evaluations, because I'm new. How many years, Mr. Atkins, is this remaining like on your most recent contract?
So I had a new contract, four years, maybe June, early June, I think it's this past June, started my new contract, four years. And I will say on the, you'll get the Google form for us, from us, the TSBA will come from TSBA, so be looking for that, they send that directly.
Yeah, we brought you on in COVID-2020, that summer, after the interim, and then we started full-time 2020, so that four-year contract, and then we renewed it last June, so four years from that June, and then we'll start talking about that in year three?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay. Line item number three, item for consideration, discussion in action, budget items for consideration. Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Chairman, continuing with some of our renovations throughout the county, as we're replacing some much-needed bleachers at Loretta High School on the visitor's side, we were advised as we were in this process of taking bleachers out, that if we were going to replace lights at that facility, now would be the time to do it, so that we would not find ourselves new bleachers in there and then trying to operate machinery around those bleachers. And so LUS had given us an assessment on our facility lights, athletic field lights. Thankfully, one of the areas that they noted that needed repair was not ours, so we were pleased with that, but Loretta High School's lights were identified as a need to be repaired or replaced, and if you're going to do it now, would be the time to do it. And Mr. Tucker, if I'm misrepresenting that, chime in, he has, Mr. Tucker has spearheaded a lot of these, but that was my understanding, is you don't have to do it, but it may cost you more later if you are working around new bleachers and things of that nature. So that was, that's the reason for this.
I'll open the floor for discussion.
What kind of shape are the lights in?
LUS tells us that the lights at Loretta High School are the worst on campus lights in any of our facilities in the county. Two of the poles there on the visitor's side are, I don't know if they're original, but they're pretty old, are they wood?
Is there, Mr. Tucker, is there a, certainly we're updating, so is there a cost savings in the running of these lights?
Well, LED, it wasn't much cheaper to run, and LUS, I think, care of this public. The installation of these lights and the lights at Summertown High School are given to us in kind for free, so there's a big savings. They're giving us a big savings by doing the work for us there.
Okay, so we're saving the light by moving forward, then what we, then what we would potentially save if we didn't and we had to do it five years down the road? Well, for one, the inflation of the lights themselves five years from now.
Yeah, the lights would obviously.
And then the extra costs of having to work around the bleachers, because now we can go in there before bleachers get installed and install these lights.
What other, excuse me, what other lighting systems do we have candidate?
By knowledge, on campus, Summertown High School's softball.
Softball maybe would.
Softball maybe, baseball I know is not, it may be the only one.
Only other one would be, potential be Summertown softball.
Maybe, yes, I don't know if it is or not.
Yeah, I'm not certain, but it may be.
Okay, so we're talking about.
Play the poles and the lights? Yes, yes.
That's a different story, I was thinking it was just lights.
Any other?
So this quote includes the cost of the poles as well?
Yes.
What kind of system is this, is this, you know, I don't really think about lighting.
It's LED lights, now you noticed all the add-on that we're not.
That's what I'm looking at.
We're not aiming for that add-on, but that's, that's.
So the show lights?
Show lights and all that stuff?
No, no.
Schools do that, we will open that up to let them do that, but we just do the basic, the first number you see there. Mr. Tucker, what is that even? I mean, what's an entertainment show?
Well.
Have you seen their basketball game?
All right, you've seen the lights that blink and go off and colors and all that stuff, yes. Now, Summertown High School, just let you know, when y'all approved of purchasing those lights for their football field, they did. The school itself added on the show, the first one there, the entertainment.
They went above and beyond out of their pocket, not out of ours, that's right.
And if y'all approve this tonight, we will offer it to Loretta and say, you And if y'all approve this tonight, we will offer it to Loretta and say, if you want to go above and beyond, we'll let you do it. This, we're just doing the basics. If they want to fancy, they got to pay for that.
So if they score or something like that, that's exciting.
Yeah. The whiz bang effect.
I like it.
Yeah. Any other conversations before we entertain a motion?
So that, I have one more.
Yes, ma'am.
My need to pay for this, Mr. Atkins, you had said comes from?
Excess sales tax.
And Mrs. Elitch can speak to this. I'm in her office a good bit, asking, you know, tell me where we were on a couple of months ago, sales tax and so forth. And so I, she and I will plan out how to use those dollars, because they vary from year to year. So this was one of those things that we said, look, we can dedicate some dollars towards this and not have to dip into fund balance. But Mrs. Elitch, if you want to speak to that a little bit plainer than mine.
You do great.
I, of course, I'm new and all this fund balance, I have questions about it, you know. So it's different every year. The allocation is different for that every year.
So when we talk excess sales tax dollars, we have a budget that the county government allows us, and I don't remember what it is right off the cuff, so forgive me, but they allow us to budget X number of dollars for sales tax. We are collecting, and historically for many years that, we have collected above and beyond that budget amount. So we take those dollars typically in the spring, come to you later in April, May, June, and say, there's, these are some summer projects or some things of that nature that we would like to dedicate those extra dollars towards. We can't put it into our budget, but we can kind of budget, budget them kind of outside of the budget, if you will.
Okay. If they're not used, do they go away? Or can you carry them over?
No, no. They roll into our fund balance if we do not utilize the dollars. So they just grow our fund balance if they're not utilized. But we have historically kind of taken that and said, okay, what are some extra projects that we might want to move forward?
Some capital projects.
Some capital projects, yes. We try not, we, we try to stay away from doing anything personnel or anything recurring.
Okay, no positions, nothing like that.
No, no. We try to stay away from that.
Kind of to give you an idea, a lot of parking lots in the last several years, some, some of these restrooms are a part of that, that we've used dollars for. So it's been that, that kind of dollars. Now, as I mentioned earlier, the support of the county commission, one thing that they have started doing the last few years, as Mrs. Elitch said, you have the budgeted amount of money that we can budget from sales tax, and then you have more than that, and that's where you get the excess. They have been kind and good to the Lawrence County School System to budget more of that money, which then can go into personnel and those things. As they close that gap with budgeted sales tax excess, they've helped close that gap, which those dollars are recurring then. We can use them every year for personnel, that sort of thing.
But you, but I'm just thinking, are there major capital projects that it can be used toward if you accumulate over the years?
Yes.
Currently, there's about $17 million in the fund balance.
And I always like to say this, with that are several ongoing projects. There will be a science adoption for our teachers, and there, the following year will be a social studies adoption for the teachers. And both of those are probably going to be 3.2 to 3.6, 7 million dollars for those two adoptions.
Well, I'll entertain a motion for the LHS football stadium lights.
So moved.
Motion to approve. We got a second by Mr. Weathers. Please call, any other last questions? Ms. Jessica, please call roll.
Adams?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Daniel?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Seven O's.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next line item, purchase of two special education buses. Vendor with Mid-South Bus Center, total $280,000. I had previously asked Mr. Atkins to send out the protocol for this to the group. I hope everyone did receive that email of justification of how we come about doing this. To my knowledge, this protocol was set into place possibly even before I was on the board. But by my understanding, and Mr. Atkins or Mr. Rogers can make the correction, buses have to be taken out of service once they get to 200,000 miles. Is that a true statement?
In 18 years.
In 18 years. So my understanding that, just to try to answer any questions even before we go too deep into this, these buses that we're looking at having to purchase this is because we're going to be losing some to that 18-year slash 200,000-mile standard. So with that being said beforehand, I will open up the floor. Yes, sir?
And also, we've had an influx of special needs children, so we've had to add another route, special needs route, which took one of our two spare buses. So we have one spare bus, and it's not something that we like to put on the road unless we absolutely have to.
You have one spare special ed bus?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's something that you don't like to use?
It's, it's only if, if absolutely necessary, and, and we're going to be losing some of our overs spare buses anyway, so we're having to upkeep them quite a bit just to keep them on the road. So this is definitely an asset.
Any questions?
How long, after you take one, 18 years or 200,000 miles, can you use it as a sub-bus? Can you still, you can't use it at all?
It's still commissioned.
Okay.
When it hits 18 years, 200,000 miles, it cannot transport students out.
Anymore?
No.
So do we trade them in? Is that what we do, or sell it, or?
Sell it.
Gov deals.
Gov deals.
You interested in one?
I need to get one for the farm.
Yes, sir, Mr. Atkins.
I, I will say this, and I think Dr. Shannon might have been exposed to this, there is legislation that superintendents have put forward to our lawmakers. I know Mr. Capley, Mr. Doggett, and Mr. Wally have heard from me numerous times about this, of extending that mileage to 300,000 to give us a little bit more room. The price of buses since I've been director have increased $50,000 to $60,000. There's a, there's a bill, not 300,000, but to 230,000 miles, will, that will help us. But that is a proposal out there that, that is getting a lot of support from directors with the increased cost of buses. Now, a 220,000-mile bus may not be something that we use. It may not have the, may not be safe enough for us. We don't know that. We'll just, we'll play that, but I did want the board to know that there is a bill that we've been arguing for or supporting for years to give us a little more mileage on those buses because of the price of buses.
Mr. Chairman, was, Mr. Atkins, was this already in our budget, or is this going to come for fund back?
This was already budgeted in the, in the, in the 24, 25 budget. Tonight is just the approval of the, the vendor.
Yeah, so we keep this, Ms. Watson, the, the protocol that I may mention of and with, with Mr. Rogers' direction from the, the bus garage, we know as a board, or Mr. Atkins knew beforehand, hey, next year, we're going to have to do three, or the year after, I mean, that's, that's, that's known.
Do your school's CT programs still have some different at each school?
Yes, Laura has one, Lawrence County High School has one, and then Joe Chapman uses his at Summer Town. He's a regular, I personally do see this.
Good to know.
Now, that's referring to the buses for like the general building projects to take the students off campus to another project and, and back to. And those buses are all in, in, in compliance with?
We could actually run a route with those buses.
Okay.
They're, they're smaller, 64-passenger buses, so, you know, they're, they're just smaller, they're a little older, but they don't have the miles on them yet, so.
Okay. Mr. Adams?
I'm just going to ask, for your bus fleet, the special ed buses, you answered the question while I go, do you have enough? You're on the edge as well up here.
If you all approve this, I will be comfortable.
Okay. What about, what about your regular fleet?
We're, we're okay right now. To finish out this year, we will lose six buses this summer.
You will lose six buses this summer?
We will lose six general buses this summer.
Okay. How's that going to affect operation action?
We've, we've been building up three or four each year, so as long as we can continue that three to four range, we, we should be in fact.
Okay. Just quick, my app right here, on 18 years at 140,000 bucks, that's, that's less than say $800 a year. It's pretty good.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to move that we approve this.
I have a motion for approval by Mr. Dryden. We have a second by Ms. Watson. Please call roll.
Weathers?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Seven O's.
Motion carries.
And I will say, Chairman Daniel, we have four buses in the budget for the, this budget cycle.
For next, for this.
So this is the purchase of two of them.
Okay. So there'll be two more coming later on in the year to offset the six that we're losing. Good deal. Thank you. Item number four, personnel items for consideration. Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Chairman, this is a grant that Mrs. Golden, Coordinated School Health, learned about and worked it and submitted it, and it is a fully funded position for a social worker through the opioid abatement program. And so we are, we're, we're no investment in this from a financial standpoint. We may be using some office space at the J.C. Barnett Center, but it's a zero budget for Lawrence County.
Any questions on this?
Is it recurring, Mr. Atkins?
Do you remember if it's?
She has told me that it's 20 years, I believe.
20 years.
20 years, I believe. Don't want me to say that, but I.
But as you know, Mrs.
I have nothing in writing, but I have verbally been told that.
As you know, Mrs. Watson, that's an every-year application for 20 years, but.
Yeah, yes.
But now, we do pick up the benefits for this employee.
I think it's all in there.
I've understood it to be salary and benefits.
Salary and benefits all from this, this grant.
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Atkins, this position, it'll be housed at Barnett Center, but it will be a traveling social worker that?
I believe, I believe there's some opportunity for that. I'm not sure that's in year one or if it's in year two, but I believe that's correct.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition. Motion carries. Last item on the agenda, other items for consideration, next board meeting, March 27, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. I will add one thing Mr. Atkins has sent out, would like for us to, please, if you've not already responded to him on your availability for a, the board retreat session, please respond to him so we can get that, that on the books and get that happening to, to make up the last one that was canceled.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a way that we could do, rather than a Saturday, do that like an hour prior to this meeting, to our regular meeting, and maybe have a different topic each month instead of having it on a Saturday? Just a, just a recommendation. I know Saturdays are, for some, very tough. And if you did an hour prior and each month have one topic that, out of this, what was it, four or five that we were going to, just a, just a thought, just a thought instead of doing it Saturdays.
Yeah. I think would that, I know, I know that, I know Dr. Shannon had some conflicts with that, would that?
Thank you, that'd be great.
Would that benefit you?
Yeah.
Does any board member have any opposition to, to doing that?
Already committed.
Everybody good with that? So we'll try to get that done next month. Ms. Alexander, are you, you okay with that?
I'm thinking.
Yes?
Now, the stuff that we put off tonight is going to bombard us.
Yes, that, that's right.
Is that where we're going?
I will switch everything.
School reports and presentation, are we going to be, we might have a meeting where we don't want to add an hour to it.
Well, now, we're not going to double up next month, are we?
No.
On the reports. We're not going to do March's reports and February's reports.
No, I, no.
Sounds like we're going to have to move that way.
I can't tell you what I was thinking. I was going to ask the, the principals to do a video of their school reports, send to you, and if you had any questions, let you email them directly, so that we wouldn't have that. Now, the student recognitions, I do think we would want to recognize the students, but we will not do the school reports. If you're okay with that, they'll just send you a video, and then you can email them directly. Any questions, call them, whatever works for you, if that's okay.
Now, are you going to do double retired educator?
No. Mr. Rochelle chose not to present this month, and then if somebody.
Next month, we'll just continue with the one.
Yes, correct.
So March's, March's protocol meeting will look just like it always does?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm in favor of that. I mean, I think that's a good idea. If the rest of the board is in favor, we'll just meet at 4:00 in March at the prescribed day here, March 27, at 4:00.